All right, good afternoon. We are going to begin our formal meeting of the City Council. We're going to begin today's meeting with an invocation. The invocation today will be given by Community Leader Diane Post. Ms. Post, are you here? Please come forward. If you can, please rise.
My name is Diane Post. I've been a resident of Phoenix since 1980 with a few lapses in Tempe. I'm speaking as a secular humanist. I ask you not to bow your heads, but instead to open your eyes. Look at the world as it is, but imagine what it could be if we all brought our good hearts to work every day. The word invocation has several meanings. The first one is the act or process of petitioning for help or support. Today I petition for support for our democracy. A democracy that includes all people regardless of their individual characteristics or choices. A democracy that does not elevate one person, one ideology, or one belief over another. A participatory democracy that stands for human rights and social justice. The second meaning of invocation is a calling upon authority or justification. Today I call upon the authority of evidence, facts, and reason as justification for the decisions made by this governmental body. Decisions that will benefit all of the people of this city, not just the rich, not just the vocal, not just the powerful, but all of us. The third meaning of invocation is a formula for conjuring. Today I conjure up the best of what's in our hearts, kindness and concern for others, acceptance and understanding, the ability to think for ourselves using reason and knowledge. The last meaning is an act of legal and moral implementation. Implementation is, of course, the most important part of any invocation. What do we want to implement? We want to lead meaningful lives. We want to be free from dogma and fear. We want to have compassion for our fellow citizens. We want to leave the world a better place than we found it. We owe it to ourselves and all with whom we share this fragile planet now and in the future to make our lives the best we can. Let us embrace a code of ethics driven by a sincere thirst for justice. A code that does not depend on threat or punishment, but can only be found within ourselves by understanding the connections to our mutual well-being. A friend of mine, Olivia Free Woman, said, "The table of peace will be set with justice." May we have both in our hearts, this day and every day. Thank you.
City Clerk, if you would do the roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Gates.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Thank you. We do have an interpreter, Judy Holm. Judy, would you raise your hand and say hello?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy. Soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Councilman Noakowski, would you approve the minutes of January 14th, 2015? Or motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes.
We have a second. Second, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes appear to have it, do you have it so ordered? Can the Clerk read the 24 hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G5987 through G5997, S41436 through S41453, and resolutions number 21291 through 21294.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve council members' boards and commission nominations?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes appear to have it, do you have it so ordered? Do we have any new members who are here? We do? All right.
Hey Mayor, I just want to recognize the ex-town manager of Cave Creek and also the Vice Mayor of Tucson for being here, Rodney Glassman.
Next item on the agenda is liquor license applications. Mr. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Move to approve items 1 through 9, except items 1 and 8.
You have a second?
Second.
Do you have any cards on those items? The City Clerk? We have no cards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it's actually Councilwoman Williams.
Counsel-
There's a card.
Is that number 1?
Yes.
Item number 1 is proposed Walgreens in District 1. Councilwoman Williams, there's one card on this item. How do you wish to proceed?
Staff, did you have a report? I think you approved it, didn't you?
Mayor, Members of the Council, for the record, my name is Denise Archibald with the City Clerk Department. Councilwoman Williams, we did not receive any comments during the 20-day comment period. Staff does recommend approval of this liquor license application for an ownership and location transfer of the Series 9 liquor license.
All right, the card is a neutral speaker. Should I bring the speaker up?
Yes, please.
Mr. Clerk? You're neutral on Walgreens? Where are you? Mr. Clerk?
Oh, right.
All right. This is liquor license, item number 1, Walgreens.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm just against it. Here's why. I just don't think that pharmacies who proclaim that they're helping us for our health should be selling tobacco and should be selling alcohol, but it is a free society. I just would ask that Walgreens, maybe this person could go back and tell their chairman of their multibilling corporation to do like CVS pharmacies have done, and stop selling tobacco and especially alcohol in a place that's supposed to be where we go and get our doctors' prescriptions and we take our children. Thank you.
Mayor-
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Councilman?
I am going to go ahead and move this for approval. I understand Mr. Clark's comments, but I'm not going to single out one Walgreens when everyone else in the valley has been able to sell it. Move approval.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is item number 8, and that is a staff recommendation to disapprove. It's in Councilman Valenzuela's district, in District 5, USA Mini Mart. Councilman, how do you wish to proceed?
Mayor, do we, why don't we start with the staff report and then we'll go to the cards?
And many cards here.
Mayor, Members of the Council, this request is for a new Series 10 license for a convenience store that does not sell gas doing business as USA Mini Mart. Consideration may be given to the applicant's personal qualifications and to the location. 14 letters with 16 valid signatures and one petition with 115 valid signatures protesting the issuance of this license have been received and are on file in the office of the City Clerk. Staff recommends disapproval of this application based on a police department recommendation for disapproval and neighborhood protest.
Thank you very much. You want to hear the cards next, Councilman? All right. We have cards, both in favor and opposed, but mostly opposed. Jeff Spellman is opposed to the item. Mr. Spellman, would you wish to provide testimony on this item? And I see your card is paper clipped with others. I don't know if that was by intention or not, so you get other people's time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So I see a few cards here, a total of four. You have up to eight minutes, but you don't have to use all eight minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. I don't intend to take all of the time.
All right.
Maybe about four minutes is about it. My name is Jeff Spellman. I reside at 2609 West Lane Avenue in Phoenix, Arizona, in District 5. As you know, there have been 14 letters submitted and one petition with 115 signatures protesting the issuance of this license. I have been designated as the spokesperson for the opposition. I'd like to recognize some of those groups who made the effort to be here today. If they'll just stand, I think there's over 25 people here from the community today. Thank you. We are opposed to this liquor license on both location and person. Within one mile of this location, 20 existing licenses far exceeds the citywide average. Violent crime is nearly three times the citywide average and property crimes are more than twice the citywide average. On the applicant's qualifications, the staff report is very clear on the applicant's ability to follow rules and regulations that would be required of a liquor license holder. Police investigated one of the applicant's other business locations and found public display of explicit sexual material within the business, potentially a felony violation. Certainly, this is not a chance we are willing to take with this business being located across the street from Washington High School. City building officials issued a stop-work order for remodeling that was being done without building permits. And although this business has been operating for more than a month now, they have yet to obtain a certificate of occupancy that deems the business safe for the public. We, as the community, conducted a formal business plan interview on January 20th with the applicant, Mr. Enriquez, and Mr. Sage. During the interview, we found no evidence of a bona fide business plan. Mr. Sage described himself as a silent business partner in this location and at least two others with Mr. Enriquez, yet nowhere on this liquor license application is he listed as having an interest in the business. Lastly, I would like to read into the record an email exchange between Mr. Sage, the silent partner on this application, and our group. This email exchange started on January 23rd at 6:58 a.m., and the subject was USA Mini Mart 7002 North 23rd Lane. It says in part, and I quote, "Gilbert needs to know ASAP. Your support is definitely needed. He is on a halt of bringing in more inventory. He cannot have a successful business relying on sodas and snacks. So he is thinking if this application is denied, he will have to rethink of what kind of business to run out of this location and that this will have to turn into Casper's Smoke Castle 2 and just rename the business." Later that day, we responded. After some discussion with our group, I want to inform you that we are still in opposition to your liquor license application. Mr. Sage responded at 5:31 p.m., "Okay, thank you, I guess." If he do not get the liquor license, he will have to scrap the Mini Mart thing and turn it into a full-blown smoke shop, as he has experience in this type of retail business with all the glass products, vaporizers, and hookah accessories, and everything that is associated with medical cards." I assume he's talking about medical marijuana. I have copies of this email that I would like to leave with you. I have 11 copies that be included in the record. "As a community, we do not take kindly to this kind of threat and will not be influenced in our decisions based on intimidation. As a group, we wholeheartedly agree with staff's recommendation for disapproval of this application. The applicant has not shown that the public convenience requires and the best interests of the community will be substantially served by the issuance of this license. Please help us protect our neighborhood. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Mr. Spellman. And for the record, Virginia Murfin, Sherri Dudek, and Mary Obrakda donated time to you. Thank you for your thorough presentation. We have a Phoenix Police detective who is here also to provide testimony on behalf of the Police Department who is opposed to the proposed liquor license. Detective Eric Brendel, if you are here, Detective. Good to see you. Thanks for coming down.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. Detective Eric Brendel, Phoenix Police Department, Desert Horizon Precinct. The Police Department recommends disapproval of this liquor license based on concerns regarding the proposed location, possible hidden ownership, and the applicant's reliability, capability, and qualifications needed to control a liquor license. The applicant, Mr. Enriquez, has two businesses with a liquor license in the city of Phoenix. Since the issuance of these licenses, the applicant has failed to obtain the required permits prior to beginning his business operations. As of today, Mr. Enriquez continues to operate even though he doesn't have these permits in place. The neighborhood just spoke about Mr. Enriquez's plan, should he not get this liquor license today, and that he'll turn it into another Casper Smoke Castle. Well, as part of the application process, the Phoenix Police and Department of Liquor conducted an inspection of the Casper Smoke Castle, who is owned by Mr. Enriquez. The inspection resulted in violations of both state law and Phoenix city codes. The most severe of these violations was stated earlier that there was a public display of sexual material within the business that can result in a felony charge. In addition to our inspection, the Arizona Attorney General's Office conducted their own youth enforcement inspection. On January 21st of this year, Casper Smoke Castle, owned by Mr. Enriquez, was found to have sold tobacco to a 15-year-old minor working for the Arizona Attorney General's Office. He was cited for criminal violation and as well as the business was cited. There are also concerns regarding possible hidden ownership at this location. Mr. Enriquez co-owns more than one business property along with a gentleman named Mr. Sayeg. During the aforementioned inspection, there were business documents found addressed to both the applicant and Mr. Sayeg. Mr. Sayeg has been seen engaged in business activities at the USA Mini Mart, as well as representing the business at several community meetings, and is also here present today at City Council. When questioned, Mr. Sayeg identified himself as a silent owner in the business, however he's not listed in the application. This suggests he has some form of interest in the business. Lastly, there are concerns regarding the proposed location. This location has not held a liquor license since late 1998, early 1999. New applications were filed in 1999, 2006, however, both were denied by the Arizona Department of Liquor, with the most recent being denied solely based on location. This area we're talking about suffers from crime rates three times above the city average, has transient problems and saturation of liquor licenses. There are 13 retail stores that sell alcohol one mile, six of them within a half a mile. More importantly, there's a 24-hour Circle K that sells all forms of alcohol immediately next door to the proposed location. Based on the concerns about his current business practices, ownership, and location, Mr. Enriquez has failed to demonstrate a satisfactory showing of being reliable, capable, and qualified. The granting of this liquor license would not be in the best interests of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Detective. Any questions for Detective Brendel? Thank you for being here. The next speaker is in favor of the proposed liquor license, William Sayeg? Sayeg?
Sage.
Sage, excuse me.
Oh, Mayor, we do have one more speaker in opposition we might have missed.
I was just kind of going back and forth.
Ms. Pam Fitzgerald? Okay.
If it's your preference that we hear all the opposition first-
That's fine. I just want to be sure. I got you. Okay.
Am I okay here?
Please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman. I want to give you a little history about this property. It's been family-owned by my family since 1981. I've held a liquor license there under my name since 1991 till, I don't recall when it, I went to dental school. We've never had any issues with the liquor board before at the location. I am not a silent partner, nor have I ever said I was a silent partner. I said I was a partner in the property. Even the detective said over and over again, "Are you a silent partner?" because utility bills were under my name. And it didn't make a difference that the utility bills were under my name. Gilbert and I are owners of the property, partners in the property. He owns the businesses. He pays the bills for the businesses. We, I know Gilbert did a petition in the Mini Mart for customers that live immediately near the shop where they walk in or ride their bikes in. He has 88 names. Out of the 88 names, 86 walked to the Mini Mart or ride their bikes. I spoke to a few because I've known a few for years since the '70s or the '80s. There's some people there that were living there since the '70s, the '80s, and the '90s. None of them knew about a neighborhood association in the area. I met with the neighborhood association with Mr. Enriquez, and therefore the neighborhood, if they were for the neighborhood, why doesn't the neighborhood know anything about them? They had mentioned that a guy died on the property because he was on crack, on drugs. Well, I found out that I've known this guy for a long time. His name is Gary Raymond. He died on June 19, 2010. He was not a crackhead. He was not on drugs. All he did is he liked his alcohol, and he died of liver condition. I know that the neighbors raised a lot of money for him, for his funeral. Where was the association back then helping to have a funeral for this man? If I've known what I know now about the association, I maybe wouldn't have wasted my time and went to their meeting because the neighbors do not know about him, at least the 86 that I know that live immediately near the Mini Mart. I fully support the liquor license. There's no reason why it should be denied. As far as I know, Mr. Enriquez never had any problems with the liquor board before. They issued two liquor license to him. He has all the necessary permits. I spoke to the detective. He told me that there was, that we needed a city permit. I went with Mr. Enriquez to the city. They told me they didn't know what I was talking about. Mr. Enriquez has copies of the permits to show that he is in compliance, and it's just getting out of hand, this whole liquor situation. I think it should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tammy Stregge.
Mayor Stanton, Councilmembers, my name is Tammy Stregge. I'm the principal of Washington High School. I would like to urge you to deny the liquor license application made by Mr. Enriquez. The location of the proposed USA Mini Mart is less than a block from Washington High School, a public school that serves 1,700 students. As principal of this school, my concern is for the safety of these students. I am concerned not only about their physical safety, but also their mental well-being and the exposure to the kinds of products that Mr. Enriquez currently sells in his two existing businesses would be a detriment to that mental well-being. A quick check of Mr. Enriquez's two existing businesses via his Facebook page for Casper's Smoke Castle reveals that his priority is not just the selling of liquor. Rather, his business places bongs and other smoking paraphernalia, equipment that we prohibit on our campus and the possession of which can result in student suspension, right next to such benign items as Hostess snack cakes and Diet Coke and less benign displays of pornographic magazines. However, these existing businesses do sell liquor, inexpensive individual cans and bottles of alcohol. The ability to purchase cheap alcohol in small quantities easily caters to unneighborly behavior. This neighborhood already has a visible high transient population, and adding a liquor license to this proposed site could draw more transients to the area. Impressionable teenagers, over 800 of whom walk every day to and from school past the site of this proposed liquor application, should not be visibly assaulted by advertisements for drug paraphernalia or other products not legally available to minors. I believe that someone else has yielded time to me-
That is correct, Ms. Stregge. Please keep going.
Thank you. Mr. Enriquez and Mr. Sayeg have verbally indicated to the Washington Neighborhood Association that they have spoken to the Washington High School Booster Club and administration of Washington High School, and that we are excited to work with them and look forward to their cooperation with Washington High School. In fact, neither of them has spoken to any representative of Washington High School about this business, and as the representative of Washington High School, I vehemently oppose this application. In addition to the other concerns that have been expressed today, I would like you to once again consider the safety and well-being of the 1,700 students that I represent every day at Washington High School. I urge you to refuse the application for a liquor license for the USA Mini Mart. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal Stregge, for taking the time to be here. I have a couple more in opposition. Bonnie Irvine, did you just provide testimony, or is it, is the argument's already been made that you wanted to make? Alan Irvine? You want to provide testimony? Okay, excellent. Followed by Gilbert Enriquez.
My biggest concern with the whole thing is I've lived in that neighborhood since 1958. My parents bought the house down there when they were new subdivision. Anyway, through the years, I've seen the whole neighborhood decline, and I think this is just one more thing in a long list of many things that causes the decline of the neighborhood. Another thing I have a problem with is why is this guy still in business without business licenses and proper permits and so forth? We're a small business owner, and we have to comply with everything that the city wants, the county wants, and the state wants. So that's my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Irvine. Leonard Clark, did you just provide testimony on this item?
Mayor, just everybody can argue.
No problem, I appreciate that. Gilbert Enriquez, did you just provide testimony on this item?
Yes, my name is Gilbert Enriquez. I'm real out of my comfort zone right now. In response to me not complying with licenses, I have all my permits here. This would be my third license. If it was an issue, they wouldn't be able to give me a third. I'm sure the liquor board themselves would have prohibited me from obtaining one. As for the principle, this association, which is amazing to me, twisted my words. I said I would like to be proactive in a neighborhood. I come from a neighborhood which was not the best. My background is kind of colorful. I've been in business for myself for probably over five years. If I would have known honestly at this point that this was going to be an issue like this, I would have left the property dark. The neighbor next door that lives next to the property had transients that were using it as a bathroom. I just feel today, a lot of these people twisted my words. I never said I worked with the Booster Club. I wanted to. But once again, it's like everything else. They talk about safety in the area. The whole area was dark where the, where the gas station is located. It's lit up now, 24 hours a day. You can walk through there, you can see everything. You can see everything before. I think it's a lot of misinformation. Obviously, they're making me out to be, I don't follow the law, which is not true. I wouldn't be able to operate if I don't follow the law. I have all my licenses, all my permits. I even have the signatures I have from the people who walk there, only because they weren't able to get to fries or chocolate cakes too expensive. I've been in contact with SNAP. I'm in the process of getting the application for the dairy and working with the EBT cards. I prefer to work with the neighborhood. Yes, I do have a smoke shop. Yes, I have a Facebook. Those are things that go hand in hand. Owning a Mini Mart, whether people understand it or not, a liquor license- or not, a liquor license kind of goes hand in hand with that. That's something I want. If not, then so be it. I'm just ama, if I wanted to, I could have brought these eighty people with me myself. Bottom line is, everything that is being said about me is not true. I feel I've been railroaded right now. Like I said, if I realized it was going to be this much of an issue, I don't even think how these people live near the area, or they wouldn't know their neighbors, or they wouldn't even know they exist. They don't even know they exist. So to me, it's kind of a, I, I just, I don't get it. Like I said, I think I've done better actually for the way it was. It's lit up now.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Enriquez, for your testimony. We have other cars not wishing to speak, but they appear to all be in opposition. There is a few dozen of them. I'll make sure they get submitted for the records, that your opposition is known for the record, and most importantly, that the state liquor board knows that the large community opposition. Mr. Enriquez, it really isn't, this isn't a matter of whether people like you or don't like you. Having a liquor license is a privilege in the state of Arizona, a privilege in the city of Phoenix, and so the issue only in hand is whether you qualify for a liquor license. The challenges really come, not just obviously from the vast number of neighbors who oppose you, but the local educational institutions and the Phoenix Police Department believe that this is not an appropriate liquor license. So that's where the recommendation is coming from. I'll now hand it over to Councilman Valenzuela for your, for your motion.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I will echo those comments, but I want to, I want to add a few. I'm very process oriented, and I think especially the neighborhood leaders who came out realize that. I'm going to go through the process, I want, I'm going to, you know, go through the information from the police department, of course, have the conversations with the neighborhood leaders and the applicant, and I didn't have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Enriquez. I did have an opportunity to speak after playing some phone tag with Mr. Sage. And this is, with all due respect to both Mr. Enriquez and Mrs. Sage, this is a very clear case to me between the report, you know, from the police department, and of course, the education institution, and of course, but, and most importantly, the neighborhood leaders. And I have to tell you, in this particular area, in this district, I'm proud of this, in this district, but specifically this area, these are incredibly well-known people, and empowered within their own community, within our community. And, and in fact, I would even go as far as saying, you know, I would even go as far as saying fair. We have our neighborhood leaders who took the time out to meet with the applicant. This is not new, this is a process, this is, you know, our neighborhood leaders are obviously process oriented as well. It does concern me, this email does concern me, and, you know, the, you know, I don't know, call it insinuation, I call it black and white, the comments of, you know, if this is not going to, you know, if we're not going to get a liquor license, then we'll just have to do this, this smoke shop essentially. That, that does concern me, and I want you to know, Ms. Enriquez and Mrs. Sage, I will be meeting with the neighborhood leaders immediately, and our planning department immediately, to make that challenging. As, when I was, I currently sit on the neighborhoods subcommittee, but when I was chair of the neighborhood subcommittee, it was this type of ordinance that I helped strengthen. And I don't think we need more of that in this community, and I think it's the wrong way to go about it. I think meeting with the neighborhood leaders and, and continuing to meet with the neighborhood leaders, continuing to meet with the police department, you know, reach out if, if, you know, if the school is, has concerns, you know, reach out. There's just other ways of going about it than to simply saying, well, if I don't get a liquor license, I'm going to have to be forced to creating another smoke shop in your neighborhood. That being said, I not only make the motion to support staff recommendation and disapproval, I would encourage our neighborhood leaders to take this to the next step and, and go to the state liquor board, because this, as we all know, that is going to be the final authority, and they will get this recommendation. Hopefully, we'll have the support of the council here, we'll find out in just a moment. But I do make a motion to support staff recommendation and disapproval.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion to disapprove passes unanimously. A strong statement by this council that hopefully will be heard by the state liquor board when they make this final decision. Thank you, everyone, from the community for, for coming out, and Principal, are you still here? Go Rams. All right. All right, next item on the agenda.
Forty-six.
Is item, oh, we have to take, take it out of order? Do we get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules and change the order of business to hear item forty-six.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed unanimously. Item number forty-six is a proposal to revise the process for private street dedication. Do we have a staff presentation on item forty-six? Maybe we don't? Are they still back at, at City Hall right now? Or they couldn't get in? One of the comment cards is from someone who probably could give the presentation, John Seifert. Good to see you again. He's a recovering city employee. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and then take testimony from the cards, and then we'll have the staff presi, if people have additional questions.
Yeah.
Or if the public has additional comments after they've heard the presentation, that'd be fine. So, Councilman Gates, you want to lead off?
Mayor, maybe just to give a touch of context to this, and then I think that's a good approach. This, this issue with private streets has been one that's existed in District Three for many years. Maybe some of the Gold Key people can put years on it, but there's a policy that's been in place since nineteen eighty-six, and the folks in Gold Key raised some important issues to my office, and I think a lot of the other people on the council that need to be looked at, that that policy needs to be addressed and revised based upon a number of circumstances, including, you know, unfortunately, the real estate crash that we went through the past few years, which showed some of the perhaps holes in the current policy. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. It sounded like an issue you've been dealing with, that has immediate impact in District Three. John Seifert, you want to provide testimony on this item? Good to see you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's really kind of an odd place to be, on this side of the table rather than sitting up there, because it's a little bit different. But anyway, I want to thank Councilman Gates and his staff, and I want to thank street transportation staff. We've been working with them, at least I've been working with them for about two, two and a half years since I've been a recovering city employee. But the neighborhood's been working on this for much longer, and this problem started back in nineteen seventy-six when the subdivision was created, and there were some problems with the plat where they created a private street subdivision without a homeowners' associations, homeowners' association to maintain it. And then in nineteen eighty-six, when they adopted the policy, city council also adopted policies to no longer provide street maintenance on private streets. So that's further compounded our problems in our neighborhood. So I'm here on behalf of the forty-five homeowners in our neighborhood, and probably some other neighborhoods in the city of Phoenix, and a tennis club in our neighborhood to support this project. So with that, that's all I needed today.
Thank you very much, John, for, for being here. Any questions for, for?
Thank you.
For John? Yep, thanks for your leadership. Janet Ruckel, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? He covered it. How about James Phillips? Did he cover it from our professional city staff? Did he get everything? Oh, did you want to provide testimony? Please, I'm sorry. James Phillips, come on down. Oh, he did cover it, okay, thank you. Any additions from our professional city staff on this item?
Mayor, Deputy City Manager Rick Neymark has joined us, and he can give a briefing on the staff presentation of this item.
And from me, at least personally, the key issue I want to cover is, I think we're doing right by District Three and, and the neighborhood that's most immediately affected. How is this likely, in your opinion, to play out over, over time as we, as we change these rules? For obvious reasons, we want to be good community stewards and work neighborhoods, and, you know, if we did it wrong in the past, get it, get it right, but we don't want to turn every private street into a public one. So finding that right balance, I think is, that's probably what I would request that you would cover.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this policy change addresses a couple of issues that previously were, essentially were prohibited by our existing street transportation policy. One was that any private streets built before, or excuse me, after nineteen eighty-six, we had no ability to consider them for dedication to the city. Secondly, streets that are primarily commercial in nature, private, private streets are primarily commercial in nature, were not allowed to be considered for dedication to the city. And thirdly, there was an issue of notification. Sometimes when homeowners' associations go away, the city notifies neighbors about street issues, often through homeowners' associations, through HOAs. And when there isn't one, and this is a great example, the, the one that people have been talking about a little bit, it allows the opportunity to consider that in the process as well. This policy is, has been around for almost thirty years, and there have been changes in case law since that time as well. And what this allows for is the city to be able to invest appropriately in a private street when the public, when there is a substantial public benefit, and that benefit is proportional to, the investment is proportional to the benefit, which is what the law restricts us to. So we can't go in and just take any old private street and, and upgrade it and accept it into the city. But the extent to which that private street is used by the public, and that, that public use impacts the condition of the street, and the public safety is enhanced by our investing in that street and/or accepting it at city standards, then we would recommend moving forward with that. So each one of these will be taken on a case-by-case process. But previously, we couldn't even consider some of these, and that's really what this policy change will allow.
Thank you very much. Did you make a motion, Councilman? Make a motion?
Yes. Just a couple, real quick, before I make the motion. Again, I want to thank John Seifert, Jim Phillips, Janet Ruckel, and the whole group there at Gold Key for all of their efforts on this, and I greatly appreciate the engagement throughout this process. I share your concern, Mayor, that this be very narrowly tailored to those appropriate instances, and I'm convinced that this approach is consistent with the City North decision, narrowly tailored to situations like the one in Gold Key where there's significant traffic going across these private streets, going to the Phoenix Mountain Preserve, and also significant traffic going to businesses that are open to the public, the Gold Key Tennis Racquet Club. So based upon that, I will be supporting this, and with that, I will make a motion to approve item forty-six.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call. Gallego. Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Thank you very much for coming down, the neighbors from District Three. Thanks so much. Good to see you again, John. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on item number ten. Item number ten is the possibility of amending the city, the chapter fourteen of the Phoenix City Code, so that our city code can conform to the model city's tax code. So I am now going to open this public hearing. Are there any cards on item number ten? Additional cards? Leonard Clark, did you wish to provide testimony on alignment with the model city tax code? Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Leonard Clark, and I live in the beautiful District One of Phoenix, up in North Phoenix, and I really like living there, even though I'm going to hopefully move very close to here in the legislature so I can see you guys all the time. We'd like that. But I just want to say, you know, I was just down to the legislature, as you know, they're in session, and I want to compliment you because you guys are staying on top of this thing, because they are constantly saying what cities can and can't do with their taxes, and these days, it's so very hard. You guys are being very ingenuative. People don't realize that a lot of the things that you try to do to be innovative at the city with our taxes, like you're doing, are stymied. Because as, you know, I guess they say, and I guess it is true, the state government is superior to political subdivisions like municipalities, but I think it's a little bit of jealousy because we have a beautiful city. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Leonard Clark, for your testimony. Are there any other citizens here to testify on item number ten? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. There are no, there's no action on, on this at this time, is that correct? Okay, later in the agenda, we'll be taking action on alignment with the model city's tax code. Next item on the agenda is item number eleven. That is a liquor license in District Six. Councilman DeCiccio has a potential conflict and will not be participating in that item. Do we have any cards on item number six? Okay, the item card is opposed. So can I get a short presentation from staff on Charlie Fine?
Mayor, members of the council, this request is for a new series twelve license for a restaurant doing business as Charlie Fine. Consideration may be given to the applicant's personal qualifications and to the location. No petition or protest letters were received by the city council, city clerk department during the twenty-day comment period. Staff recommends approval of this liquor license application.
Okay, so staff recommends approval. We have one card opposed to the item, and that is Jean Lawson. Ms. Lawson, do you wish to speak? Good to see you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Lawson, and I live at forty-three twenty East Kelly Felice, just four houses from Charlie Fine, the new restaurant going in at forty-seven thirty, North Forty-Four Street. The property is a residential home that is being converted to a restaurant. We, the neighbors of Charlie Fine, are concerned with the dangerous conditions that will come with having a restaurant with limited parking and a liquor license in our neighborhood. We have graciously met with Mr. Flanagan, the applicant, and do believe he has good intentions. However, we have concerns for our children now being exposed to the alcohol use, along with the increased traffic that will come through our neighborhood from the restaurant patrons. When meeting with Mr. Flanagan, we agreed to look into closing off the entrance to our neighborhood by making a cul-de-sac and/or other alternative solutions to our concerns. We are unable by city code to create a cul-de-sac in our neighborhood due to the space requirements, and we have been informed we cannot request permit parking or other solutions to both traffic and the use of alcohol in our neighborhood until a problem exists. When Grace Communities met with the neighbors to get approval for the plans to develop the property in question, they agreed to build a buffer slash green area that would have accommodated the concerns of the neighbors as well as not putting in a restaurant on the property now known as Charlie Fine. We know now that, once approved, anything can happen, as original plans agreed to by the neighborhood have changed without our knowledge or consent. We request that the council consider the impact to the neighborhood prior to issuing a liquor license. We ask that that consideration be given to us, the residents of the community. Perhaps the council can order a traffic study showing the impact of the increased traffic due to the restaurant and apartment development that will be required to turn right when leaving the properties. This will cause the traffic from these established instruments to use our residential street as a pass-through thoroughfare in order to turn left onto Forty-Four Street. I understand that my councilman, Mr. DeCiccio, will not be voting on this matter due to a conflict he is not willing to disclose. I ask that all others voting on this matter take into consideration as to whether or not you would like an establishment with liquor and increased traffic. and increased traffic in your neighborhood where your children are being raised. Thank you for your time and consideration for our request not to approve the liquor license for Charlie Fine.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lawson, for taking the time to come down. Patrick Flanagan and Charlie Fine are in favor, not wishing to speak. Would you change your mind? You do wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Flanagan. And to give you a little context, for the last four years, I ran a business called Carmel's Breakfast House right up the street at Forty-Fourth Street in Camelback on the southwest corner. We had a very successful business and we established a great customer rapport. In November of two thousand fourteen, after our four years, we had to move because the center was demolished. So we were fortunate enough to find this location literally a hundred yards away from where we were. And we're reopening a new concept called Charlie Fine. We're undergoing a remodel on a home that's just been in total disrepair for the last five years under the Adaptive Reuse Program in the City of Phoenix. So the original footprint of the house will remain. We're just going to be gutting the inside and doing wonderful things to it. We do have ample parking per city code. We have eighteen spaces plus additional parking next door in the large apartment complex that is going up with close to four hundred units. There's public parking in the roundabout in that facility. Additionally, we would tell our customers in the future to please park in our parking structure as opposed to parking in the residential neighborhood. Additionally, being in the middle of Arcadia, we expect a lot of foot traffic and cyclists, bicyclists, and mothers with their babies in strollers because that's what it is in Arcadia. Jean Lawson, the protester here today, is a wonderful individual. She reached out to us twice to postpone our hearing. Once on June seventh and again, I'm sorry, once on January seventh and again on January twenty-first. And we have done that. So this is our third attempt at trying to get this resolved. I met with Jean at her house at the location on January tenth, explained the situation. And she was kind enough to set up a meeting at her house the following Saturday with forty of the neighbors. I felt it went well. A lot of the people seemed very optimistic and happy that we were coming back in a new concept in that location. Following the second meeting, I got an email from Jean saying she would be protesting. So on Super Bowl weekend, I went out and I have fifty signed petitions directly from that neighborhood in support of Charlie Fine and a liquor license. I'll give these to you. Good luck.
Yeah, please submit them for the record. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that your testimony?
That's it.
All right. Thanks for coming down. Did anyone else wish to testify on item number eleven? Proposed liquor license for Charlie Fine. I'll now open up to members of the council. Any questions or a motion? Councilman Nowakowski?
Mayor, this is kind of awkward for me because the council member of that district isn't telling us if he approves it, doesn't approve it.
That would be illegal for him to do so. Correct. Yes, yes.
So I'm in a situation where I really like to have more time. I don't know if we can continue this and actually ask our staff for more information because this is the first time I'm hearing that there's.
Okay, so the request is for a continuance. That's a perfectly appropriate request. Does that put us in trouble with regard to the time for, that we have to let the State Liquor Board know our position?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Nowakowski, we could, we've already continued it twice for the applicant to meet with the residents, but we could potentially move it one last time if the applicant is amenable to it and signs a sixty-day waiver.
Okay, Mr. Flanagan, Councilman Nowakowski is asking, he wants to dive a little bit deeper into this one just because of the kind of awkwardness of not having the council member for that we usually take. We don't always agree with the council member of the district, but generally we do, I think it's fair to say here. The unique situation of the council member having a conflict of interest on this particular case, not participating. Would you be willing to sign a waiver so that Councilman Nowakowski and likely others in the council could dive in a little deeper on the case?
It's nothing to do with me or the prior existing conditions that upset the neighborhood. So I'm separate from that. There was a great deal of concern and anxiety on how that all came down. And, you know, it's there in their backyard and now I'm next door. So my only issue is I'm at that one hundred and five-day period on the liquor license. So I need to get a continuation on that so I don't have to go through the process all over again and pay for the fees.
Oh, you're talking about for the?
The hundred, there's a hundred and five-day cycle that starts when you pay for the liquor license. It has to hit at that point or it has to be extended.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council.
Please, yeah.
Just as a point of reference, the one hundred and five-day timeframe that the applicant is referring to actually ends on February twentieth. So the state has to take action at some point between now and February twentieth. Our next council meeting is February eighteenth and therefore, if he does sign the waiver, we could do this one last time and he would be right under that one hundred and five-day timeframe so that the state will still have time to look at it.
You're cutting it close, but if we were to do that, but it would give the council opportunity to dive in. And I think Councilman Nowakowski, maybe others, would feel more comfortable supporting the license if they had time to dive in. Otherwise, it may be a different motion here today.
What are my options?
Well, I think if you were to agree to the continuance, you would, the question, you'd still have time at the state. It would be, it would give you forty-eight hours from our next meeting. The council members here would have the opportunity then to dive in and learn a little bit more about the case. Against the question, there's not a comfort level, at least by one council member anymore, to move forward with the case based upon what they know. And again, normally, the council member would be involved. In this case, because of the conflict, it creates a little bit of awkwardness. And so I think he's, the council member is asking for a little more time so that we can eliminate that, to the extent possible, that awkwardness.
Okay, so when would be the next hearing?
February eighteenth is our next meeting. That would give you, and it would then give you still enough time to get to, to get to the state. And we appreciate your patience on that.
Okay.
Okay, so you have to sign the paperwork. Councilman, you have a motion then for a continuance. Do we have a second on the motion for a continuance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll try to get as many of the council members an opportunity to meet with you as possible in between that time period. So I appreciate you making yourself available. Motion for a continuance, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Next item on the agenda is item number twelve. This is Heat Cabaret in District Eight. It is, staff has a motion for disapproval. Can we get a short staff presentation on the item?
Mayor, members of the council, this request is for an ownership and location transfer of a Series Six On Sale All Liquor Liquor License for a topless bar doing business as Heat Cabaret. This location is currently licensed for liquor sales with a Series Seven On Sale Beer and Wine Only Liquor License. Consideration may be given to the applicant's personal qualifications and to the location. Staff recommends disapproval of this item due to the applicant's recent history of liquor license violations at another location and the applicant's failure to demonstrate that the public convenience requires and the best interests of the community will be substantially served by the issuance of this liquor license. Regarding the violations, the applicant has had recent liquor license violations at another location called Locust Show Club, located at thirty-six fourteen West McDowell Road, including a fine for seven hundred and fifty dollars that was paid for failure to request ID from an underage buyer and for selling, giving, or furnishing an underage person with alcohol. Additionally, in August of two thousand fourteen, a fine of one thousand dollars was paid for possession or consumption of alcohol after two-thirty a.m. Regarding the public convenience, based on the crime rate, which is over three times higher than the city's average crime rate within a one-mile radius, and the number of existing liquor licenses in the area, the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the public convenience requires and the best interests of the community is substantially served by replacing the current Series Seven Beer and Wine Only Bar License with a Series Six On Sale All Liquor Liquor License.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz, Christian Cruz. You're in favor of this item? Would you wish to provide testimony? Sure. And Fernando Cruz, also in favor, but not wishing to speak. Is that accurate? Okay. Opposed to the item is Josefina Valenzuela. Good to see you. Followed by Maria Palomec, followed by Maria Arenazas, and then Ricky Wilson. And whichever order you wish to speak is fine.
Buenas tardes. Señor alcalde, señores del concejal. Mi nombre es María Guadalupe Arenazas y vivo en el diecinueve, Nineteen oh one twenty-five place, cerquita de este cabaret. La cual no estoy de acuerdo que esté porque nosotros la gente caminamos por ahí y no es justo que haya este cabaret cerca de dos escuelas y una iglesia. Los niños pasan para agarrar el bus en la veinticuatro calle, señor. Por favor. Les pido, por favor.
Can we take a short pause? Make sure we get accurate translation.
Oh, yeah.
Hello, mayor, members of the council. I would like to, I would like to oppose on this license because I live close to this place. And there are, we walk by this place and there is two schools, there are two schools close to this place and the children walk to ride the bus or to take the bus to go to school. And there is a church and we don't want this place to have a liquor license close to our, in our community.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Traigo una pequeña lista de personas que no estamos de acuerdo.
I have a small list of persons that we disagree.
De que este cabaret esté ahí.
To have this cabaret here.
Hemos encontrado en el piso agujas, con dones, con el respeto que se merecen todos, en el plena calle donde frente del cabaret.
We have found, we have found right in front of the cabaret condoms and syringes right on the floor, right next to the cabaret.
Muchas niñas que van a la escuela tienen que pasar a fuerzas en frente de ese cabaret. Señor alcalde, por favor, señores, por favor, les pido de la manera más atenta que no se le dé continuación a esta licencia. Gracias. Para servirles estoy. Buenas tardes.
Mister mayor and council members, I plead you to please do not approve this license. There are children and girls that walk by this place all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time to testimony. Others who wish to testify? Please just state your name for the record.
Muy buenas tardes, señores concejales, señor alcalde. Mi nombre es María Palomet y.
Hello, my name is, good evening, Mister mayor and council members. My name is María Palomet.
Palomec.
Palomec. Well, en diciembre, yo venía caminando con mi familia y yo miré a una niña que para mí era menor de edad. Iba acompañada de un adulto, pero la niña tenía entre de quince a dieciséis años entrando en esa propiedad por el lado de atrás.
On December, I was walking with my family and I saw a girl. She was about fifteen or sixteen years old and she was walking with an adult by this property.
Más de una vez, al pasar enfrente, la puerta, que es de día, que es cuando usualmente pues uno está caminando, sobre todo ahorita que el clima está fresco, la puerta ha estado abierta.
And now that the weather is nice, the door is open.
Yo y mis hermanas íbamos caminando para la pet boy el día que encontré jeringas y condones enfrente de la propiedad.
My family, my daughter and I, we were walking by Pet Boy and we saw condoms and syringes right in front of the property.
Vender alcohol en esa propiedad ya con estas muestras que nos está dando, me parece que no es conveniente porque ya que tenemos está el Seven Eleven, está Circle K, y más alcohol en una comunidad donde se está levantando y no queremos que nuestra comunidad decaiga.
By selling, by selling alcohol, our community is going to go down, is going to decline. And we already have Circle K and we have Seven Eleven and we don't want our community to decline.
Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Let's see, Ricky or Josefina? Who wants to be next?
Mayor, Stanton, and council. My name is Ricky Wilson. I'm a senior assistant pastor at Faith Christian Center. And our concern is basically the credibility and liability of Mr. Cruz and this establishment. The record indicates that liquor was served to an underage minor at another establishment, also the fact that they were fined for selling after hours. I've listened to him speak before and he's mentioned in times past of the commitment to the area. I can say that we, as a business entity, are committed to the area of seventeen years. We have invested recently in seven figures and continue to do so to regentrify the area. We don't believe that alcohol in this area that's three times higher because of crime is something that's going to be viable, that's going to be sustaining, and/or that is going to be welcomed. Our desire is to see the area economically revitalized for the benefit of the families and the people that are there. We are a spoken voice for those who may not speak out because we are definitely against it at every possible level. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Pastor Wilson, for coming down. Josefina, Ms. Valenzuela, good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, council and Mayor Stanton. Thank you. I just, my name is Josefina Valenzuela. I live at eighteen sixteen North Twenty-Second Street. And I live, like, Twenty-Second Street in McDowell. But in order for myself to cross over to go visit my friend, Guadalupe, or walk down to the Pastor Wilson's church, I have to cross right in front of Heat Cabaret. I understand it's a business and business is our business, but this one affects children and our neighborhood. And our neighborhood has so many challenges. So I just ask that you just take into consideration what is at stake here for all these little kids and ways that we can look to improve our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. Mr. Cruz, Christian Cruz, you said you wanted to go last. It's your turn.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Council. My name is Christian Cruz. Let me give you a little background of my location. My location has been around for at least thirty years, since the eighties. I took the location from being an all-new cabaret catering to eighteen and up crowd from last year coming to your city council and being approved for a seven liquor license, meaning I could sell beer and wine. That's what I have now. The reason I wanted to do that is because I didn't have the means to have a full-blown liquor license at the moment. And another reason I wanted to do that is because I had a lot of problems with minors in my neighborhood. I'm not in the best neighborhood, you know, minorities like myself. There's a lot of gang members. There's a lot of graffiti, stuff like that. And I kind of was attracting that. I was attracting that crowd because that's what the crowd was in the neighborhood, a lot of the younger kids and stuff. So I have problems, you know, with people, you know, tagging my building, you know, kids not leaving the building at proper hours. You know, we did after-hours. And I had a lot of problems, you know, when you're eighteen, your mentality's not there like an adult. And I understand that. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to make it a more mature business since my business is already a mature, adult-oriented business that I have the privilege of having a liquor license. And I think it's a privilege. And I thank for you guys letting me have the license. But what happened now is I'm in a situation where if two customers, three customers come in my bar and one of them drinks vodka, two of them drink beer, and I am only able to sell them beer, the guy with, the vodka drinker makes my whole party leave. So that means that I'm kind of stuck in a back road now where I have to go back and cater to the minors and take off the liquor license. Or now that I'm able to afford a liquor license, you know, have a mature adult make a mature, conscious decision to attend an adult cabaret that's been there since the eighties. And regarding, you know, like the lady said, there's condoms and needles. I'm pretty sure that the police department will tell you themselves that they have tons of street people around my neighborhood. And I'll tell you, I'm here because we continue this because I was, I was asked to go talk to my neighborhood. So I went to the Neighborhood Association. We had a vote. I'd explained to them what I just explained to you, how I'm kind of stuck in a, in a bad place as a businessman. And we had a vote and forty-six people agreed they would like a liquor license in my neighborhood and eight of them don't.
All right, I gave you, I gave you a little extra time. I was hoping you were going to address the issue of the liquor license violations, but you did not do so with your time.
Oh, I can.
That's your choice, but we are, we are out of time. So I'm now going to turn to councilwoman. Do you have a motion on this item, item number twelve?
I do have a motion. And this is, as Christian mentioned, something we've spent a lot of time on already as the council when this. When this business was operating as Chi Chi's, our office sat down with them and we do appreciate they did change the sign and the name to one that is more consistent with the neighborhood's values. But we spent a long time negotiating when they came before us for a beer and wine liquor license and it had a lot of details, including, I mean really down to the lights in the parking lot and that their staff, security staff would be working to call our police and address the transient issues. And I was surprised to see a new liquor license come through for hard alcohol. They were unable to notify our office ahead of time due to family medical problems. But have put a lot of time into this thought and this thought into this and I want to thank my staff who sat down with people and tried to understand. I think the immediate neighbors do really want to see this and then right behind them, we got a lot of concerns and they did not, were not comfortable with an applicant who has, has had a history of serving underage individuals and serving after two thirty at night and the neighbors really felt that we didn't have the capability, reliability and qualifications to hold a liquor license here. When this came before us last year, we did, the staff did recommend approval and now staff is not recommending approval. And so I want to support that recommendation and make a motion to disapprove item twelve due to the applicant's recent history of liquor license violations and the applicant's failure to demonstrate that the public convenience requires and the best interest of the community will be substantially served by issuance of the liquor license.
All right, a motion to disapprove. We have a second, any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call.
Mayor, real quick.
I'm sorry, council now, council, I apologize, go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to let the individuals from the community know that. Thank you for coming out. Quiero decirles gracias por venir porque creo que su testimonio es algo muy importante para nosotros escucharnos. Gracias, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, councilman. Roll call.
De Cicio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the motion disapprove was unanimously supported. Thanks everyone for coming down, very, very much appreciate it. The next step will be the state liquor board. Thank you, Mister Cruz. Next item, thirteen, Twisted Peacock, also in District Eight. Councilman, what's your pleasure? We have, it looks like...
We've been keeping the city clerk's office very busy and thank you for your support. So this is one where it was originally a recommendation to disapprove and we were able to sit down, address concerns and now my motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second in favor of item number thirteen. The applicant is here in favor, do you wish to provide testimony or do you, since it is a positive recommendation, okay. Okay, we have a motion in favor, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number fourteen. This is the vote as a follow-up to the, the public hearing as it relates to alignment of our city tax code with the model city's tax code. Do you have a mo, oh, city clerk needs to read the title.
Item fourteen, ordinance G five nine eight seven. An ordinance amending the Phoenix City Tax Code and the Regulations of Chapter Fourteen of the Phoenix City Code to conform with changes of the model city tax code as approved by the Municipal Tax Code Commission. Amending Article Eight, Section fourteen dash three fifty point two, Article Four, Sections fourteen dash four eighty, fourteen dash six sixty, Article Three, Sections fourteen dash three hundred, fourteen dash three ten, fourteen dash three twenty, fourteen dash three thirty, fourteen dash three forty, fourteen dash three fifty, fourteen dash three sixty, fourteen dash three sixty-two, fourteen dash three sixty-four, fourteen dash three sixty-six, fourteen dash three seventy, fourteen dash three seventy-two and fourteen dash three eighty. Phoenix City Regulations fourteen three hundred point one, fourteen dash three hundred point two, fourteen dash three ten point one, fourteen dash three ten point two, fourteen dash three ten point three, fourteen dash three fifty point one, fourteen dash three fifty point two, fourteen dash three fifty point three, fourteen dash three sixty point one and fourteen dash three sixty point two. And providing for a retroactive effective dates.
Thank you very much, we have a motion on item number fourteen. Did you say, do we? Can we have one, yeah? Oh, okay, I had, can I just ask two brief questions? Of course, councilman, vice mayor, questions?
Neil, so this is not a tax increase and this is to conform with state law?
Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor Waring, yes, this is, there is no tax crease, increases in here. This is just to get us to conform with the model city tax code.
Move approval, item fourteen. We have a motion, we have a second, are there any additional questions by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A roll call, I apologize, roll call.
De Cicio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passed unanimously. Next item is ordinances and resolutions. Vice mayor, do we have a motion ready?
I move that items fifteen through forty-five, being ordinances number G dash fifty-nine eighty-eight through G dash fifty-nine ninety-six, S dash forty-one forty-three six through S dash forty-one forty-five three and resolutions twenty-one twenty-nine one through twenty-one twenty-nine four be adopted, except items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-four in its entirety, which also should include twenty-four F and twenty-four L being voted separately, twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-seven, thirty-eight and forty and noting that item thirty-five is withdrawn, be adopted.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, and there was a series of cards on item thirty-five, they can't testify. That item is being withdrawn, just want to make sure the folks are aware of that. Mister Schmidt, Mister Pimentel. And Mister Ramirez, the street manager, you know the reason why it's being withdrawn? Just a moment, that's a fair question.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-five, I believe is being withdrawn because there is a protest that we need to review before we're ready to have a...
We received a legal protest?
We received a legal protest, yes.
Mister Schmidt, you got that, so we received a legal protest? Okay, thank you. I should, I should have mentioned that earlier, I apologize that the item was going to be withdrawn. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Councilman Williams got the second. Miss Rogers, you wanted to provide testimony on items fifteen through twenty, were they included in the motion?
They were not.
They were not, okay, we're holding, okay. All in favor, say aye, or roll call.
De Cicio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passed unanimously. Next item, Vice mayor.
Move approve my item fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on fifteen. Miss Rogers, you wanted to provide testimony on fifteen through twenty, but I think you wanted to provide comments of a general nature on those items, so this would be a good time to do so. Okay, so Vice mayor would like to revise this motion.
I move approval item, I changed my motion to I move approval items fifteen through twenty.
Motion and a second on that. Miss Rogers, the floor is yours.
You know, these are all amend zoning code items, so they have a general complimentary and consistent applicability. First of all, finish your work on updating and pass the new general plan. We last passed it in oh one. So it is now thirteen or fourteen years since. This is remiss and irresponsible. Get it done. Now, on these zoning amendments. When an applicant requests rezoning, they fill out an application which includes their name. Probably their address and phone number and I don't, never done it, so I've never filled one out. But nobody fills out an application for anything without his or her name. Put the name in every agenda item for a zoning code. We, the citizenry, have the right to know who these people are by name. I can't even read my own Braille. But I want clarity, this is what I want, period, from you people in everything. And I know what the other main item I have on this is. These are serious items. This started many years ago, before I even became a practicing citizen and that's now in my sixteenth year, for better or worse. These items request, require, excuse me, that each one of you, all nine, including the mayor, are familiar with the environment and the neighborhood in which these requests, for which these requests are made. The prevalent and/or mix of zoning and what that, there are six items here, so I have more than two minutes. What this would do to the environment. There is land all over this city that is zoned appropriately for whatever rezoning these people want. And that's the area to which they should be directed. Probably by their ever so helpful and accommodating legal representative. But they want to pocket the dough from the client and they accommodate rather than counsel. You are responsible to be our counselors, we, the city of Phoenix, you, the representatives thereof. So I ask of you, become familiar. Two of these are in District Eight and in a part of District Eight which was, which I am readily familiar. And both of them have mixed zoning. R one, R two, some R three and four, C one, C two and occasionally A one. Know A two that I know of in these particular neighborhoods. A lot of recently approved, and it's been an advantage to the neighborhoods, commercial business park, which isn't noxious, noise, usually noxious, noisy, fume emitting activity. Recently, last fall, you approved a rezoning in District Eight near Thirty Fourth or Thirty Fifth Street on East Southern for a truck terminal. That's A one industrial. That area has no A one or A two. It's residential and commercial and recently some new business park right on Southern. This is across the street from a school, a brand new, beginning its third year charter school and surrounded by residential. It was remiss and irresponsible of you to approve that, but you did. And I asked Councilman Gates after the fact, when I bumped into him, he probably fell unfortunately up on the twelfth floor. And I asked him, I said, did you go to the location and the surrounding neighborhood to ascertain the applicability of this rezoning request before you as one of the people approved it? And he said, no. I said, that's what I thought. That is irresponsible on your part as a councilman. And someday it'll come to your neighborhood. And I hope you get the left hook. I mean it for you people. You aren't just paid and elected to come down here and sit in these chairs at formal meetings usually twice a month and at a policy scheduled usually once a month. You're scheduled to do your due diligence, your research and your onsite work when onsite work is required. And I want nothing less for all the people of this city, for every district and every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Rogers, for your testimony. We have a motion on items fifteen through twenty. Councilman Noakowski, you have a question?
Mayor, just for clarification on item number nineteen, I did talk to Father Joe and then he did explain and we did visit with them regarding his project in the retreat center. So I just want to let you know that Kate and myself actually sat down with the applicant and, and looked over the project, so thank you, Mister Rogers, I do agree that if it's possible, we should visit all those sites, but sometimes there's so many of them that time doesn't allow us to visit every single site.
All right, thank you very much, we have a motion.
I just want to add to that.
Please, of course.
So I have, I actually started on the Central City Village Planning Commission when the first of these items was going through and so have seen it through multiple iterations and I've had a chance to visit these sites and been briefed several times by the two village planners who cover these areas and met with the applicants and been to Central City and South Mountain Villages while they were, on the days they were heard and so I feel like we are really paying attention and that these are good projects.
Thank you very much, any other comments by members of this council? Roll call.
De Cicio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, those items passed unanimously, next item, Vice mayor?
Move approval, item twenty-four, except twenty-four F and twenty-four L.
We have a motion and a second on item twenty-four, the payment ordinance, except F and L. Mister Vint, up to two minutes of testimony, good to see you.
Yes, I am Mister Vint again and this is something for the history books. Read the paragraph right after item twenty-four for payment ordinance. Request to authorize the city controller to disburse funds in an aggregate amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents for the purpose of paying vendors, contractors, claimants and others and providing, now listen to this, additional payment authority under certain existing contracts, city contracts. If this isn't a disgrace to whatever is happening here. You go to I and O and it's, you, you just took a few other ones out, but I is a travel association paying membership of sixty thousand, fifty dollars to belong to a big airport. And I is a disgrace to the following vendors. And they get to the bottom here, Alon Asphalt Company, forty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven point zero zero cents. So they round it out to thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three to the Aragon Asphalt to a wonderful even sixty thousand dollars. But in the beginning, that paragraph that I read to you, and you should have read it before, not to exceed to a penny. And then these people can round it out to where it comes to a even sixty thousand or the other one a sixty thousand, fifty dollars. And the other disgrace here, when you come to these meetings, you never know what time the items that you want to speak on comes up. I want to make a motion or a request and I want it followed through with that you're going to operate like a business. Item number one comes first, you don't just bring in some other items so maybe a few of your friends could leave. Going back in Phil Gordon's time, we would be here, the Phoenix Suns owners would come in, stop the whole damn business, let them people make their business. And then they come over to me and they said, I'm sorry, but we didn't want this to happen.
All right, thank you, Mister Vint, for, you went over your time and I appreciate your comments very much. All right, so this is on item twenty-four, payment ordinance except for F and L, we had a motion. We had a second, roll call.
De Cicio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, now before we move on, there was a card not wishing to speak on item number sixteen in favor. We did approve the item, Nathaniel Burns, I want to make sure that's noted for the record. Next item, Vice mayor? Oh, Councilman Williams, please.
Item twenty-four F and L.
We have a motion in favor, twenty-four F, twenty-four L, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, are there any comments on these items?
Is it F and L together?
Is it F and L together?
You want to split them up?
Yeah, because I'm okay with one of them and not the other.
Okay, then just F.
24F then, as the motion is amended to. Is a second okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so 24F is the item. Are there questions or comments on 24F? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So that item passes seven to one. Do I have a motion on 24L?
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments on item 24L? Are there any cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes six to. Next item is item number 25, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item 25.
Second.
The motion is second on 25. Ms. Rogers, did you have comments on 25?
Item on the floor.
There are the next ones up.
Please come on down and provide that testimony. Also wishing to speak are on 25 is Ms. Barker and Mr. Vint. Ms. Barker, since you're there, you mind going first and then, and then Ms. Rogers after Ms. Barker, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Some, we citizens did our homework and we attended the audit meeting and
Thank you.
I think that, well, I know that there's an improvement in the public process because I was at a meeting previous and they didn't have the call to the audience on that agenda and our new city manager said that he would get that on there and kudos, you did, and we got to speak. And I think it's important because not only does auditing do financials, in this case they've hired Thornton, who is an outside auditor on many different audits, but the audit department has an integrity line and as it's designed now, it's really for employees. Some employees came up and talked to us today and, you know, they had some ideas, but some of them are afraid to go on the integrity line because the thing is, is that they may be retaliated. That's, that's a fear and we should get rid of that. And also I think that the process should be opened up so that when the public has an outlet to go on and make the statement with the data that will help our city, you know, have the integrity. All of us need to fly higher, Jonathan Living Segal. And earlier I mentioned about like the ethics, which I believe that you do need to adopt. There has been some type of movement. I think, Mayor, you wanted that, but it's been, you know, it hasn't been done. That needs to be done and in the audit department. And finally, I want to say, when Frank Fairbanks was here, I, you know, I'm not an accountant, but I looked at some of these audits and I says, gee, I says, there's loopholes in there. It's right there, it says, well, we weren't, we didn't have the data, so we can't comment on that. And Frank said to me, Diane, he says, I come from financial, and he says, they all have that in there. We need to tighten up and we need the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Ms. Rogers, followed by Mr. Vint.
Okay, this is a serious situation, continuing the contract with Grant Thornton, and I have no cross to bear for or against this auditing company. I've never had experience personally with an auditing company. But I know it's a pattern in the City of Phoenix and has long been a pattern. You get comfortable with a contractor and you may give him a contract for a year with renewables, you know, blah, 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 or up to five years in renewables. And that, I presume, is within state law, acceptable parameters. But you get comfortable and so you just keep doing it again. Let's have a real review. And also, in this narrative, it says, completed all contract deliverables and feedback on performance. Define deliverables. And define what you expect on feedback and who's giving the feedback. You're paying the money, we provided. Let's have a complete, thorough, responsible, objective audit. And the 1213 and 1314 audit of 3PI, Parks and Preserve Initiative, the records allegedly were provided by Burke's own admission, by Jim Burke, the director of P and R. They were selectively presented. And there are no more an accurate audit of that account, which was developed by taxpayer initiative and plurality passage. This is neither complete nor honest. You are putting yourselves in a very, very tenuous position and there's no need for it. Follow the regs, follow the law, and be complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Vint, up to two minutes.
Yes, I am Pat Vint again. So how can you add more to what Brett had just said? You've got to have an audit, not just something making motions. This city is so screwed up, and I'm sorry to say that, but I have to get to the point and I got to get your attention. This city is so inefficient, and Ed knows this, but see, he's got his head down, he doesn't want to hear it. But even Bill Gates, and he disappeared, he came up to our neighborhood and seen the problems, where hundreds and hundreds of visits to certain jobs and nothing ever gets completed. Nothing gets fixed. And if you look at the beginning of this page, where you want us to come down and participate as citizens, you don't want us down here participating. We have to come down here and get so damn nasty that you took me out of here once because I threatened somebody. How can you not threaten somebody when you get no respect whatsoever? You're all sitting over there looking this way, and I've been accused, I've heard of things going around, that the only reason I come down here is I like to get along with some of you and I like to get nasty with the other bunch. But this is terrible. Something's got to be done. You cannot have an audit if you're not going to have a real audit. And you can't be accepting applications and it's said that they, they participated or they were the low bidder. Why wouldn't they be the low bidder? They know they only have to do a certain amount. If they don't do half of it, so what? Just do half a job and go on about your business. I've owned and operated business for years, since 1956 in Phoenix, and if you complain, you're on the enemy list. And this would be on, now come on, Jim. Listen, you're not supposed to be talking with somebody's
Your time is up, Pat.
You know
Ms. Fran, I think the city manager want to address the audit issue.
Mayor, members of the council, just wanted to clarify, actually, three of you serve on the Audit Committee, which does receive reports from Grant Thornton. We do, as a best practice, rotate audit firms at the most every five years. That is, so they can learn the business, but they don't get comfortable. So after five years, we switch to a different outside audit firm. This outside audit firm has presented to the Audit Committee and these reports are the deliverables, they're audits of all of that, and they report to the Audit Committee on their deliverables.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Vint. We have a motion on this item. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Item 27, move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Nowakowski has a potential conflict on this item and will not be participating. Are there any cards on 27? Leonard Clark, did you write testimony on 27?
Well, Mayor and council, council members, the reason I want to speak on this is I really strongly support what you're doing and the organization, Lucha. I want to thank them also for being there as an organization for the community. As you know, you as a city have been doing your best to make sure that housing is equal and fair. So by doing this and advising people who might traditionally be discriminated against, such as my brothers and sisters in the LGBTQ community, people of color, minorities, religious, different people, discrimination still occurs today. And I believe that this is money well spent and I believe that you should now also understand that the Senate has a bill before, SB 1072, that will try to force you to not allow business or property owners of homes, that type of thing, to allow certain groups of people. But anyways, what I'm saying is, there are other forces at work and I think they're working against equal housing. So what you're doing is, I think, very important because a lot of the people out there, we can't afford to fight what's going on. And so Lucha will do a good job in advising people of their rights to not be discriminated against in our City of Phoenix. I really thank you for doing it and strongly support it.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second, noting Councilman Nowakowski's potential conflict. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes six to one. Next item, Vice Mayor.
I would move approval of item 31.
We have a motion on item 31. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Gates had, I think he had city business tight, had to leave the meeting. Do you have any comments from members of the council? Any cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes seven to one. Next item of Councilman Williams?
I would move approval of item 33.
We have a motion on 33?
Second.
Do we have a second? Are there any cards on 33? Any comments from members of this council?
Mayor, I'd make a comment.
Please, Councilman.
I think anyone who's been at City Hall, either looking at the outside of the building or look at trying inside, trying to look through many of our windows, understands the need for the reason we need our windows washed. It's been several years, I believe, and the bird coating on the outside is most appealing and also I am afraid it could cause serious health issues for employees and even people, pedestrians on the street. So I'm very supportive. I think it is past time to have our windows in the building cleaned, not only City Hall but the other buildings as well. And I hope we don't have to go as long in the future for it to happen again.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes seven to one. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item 37.
Second.
We have a motion in favor of 37. We have a second. Mr. Vint, you have testimony on 37. Mr. Vint, this concerns the HASTIS maintenance and support requirements contract.
See what happens here, you screw up the whole system, citizens have no idea what time their item's going to come up or if they're even going to be called. But 37, the bus and light rail system, that is so a disgrace that we found out during the Super Bowl. People were crowded on there, two-thirds of them weren't paying, and they should have elevated the damn thing. You can't even navigate up Central Avenue because they never know what time a train is coming. So if you want to make a left or a right turn, you have no chance. So that's why people get hit by the damn train, because they sit there for a half hour waiting for the green light to come up or a green arrow to make a left turn or right turn, however it might be, mostly left. And then they get hit, everybody in the train gets hurt, cars get tore up because they never thought. And that extension up on 19th Avenue is a disgrace. They're destroying businesses right and left. So anyway, again, I need to make a recommendation that you're going to operate the City of Phoenix like a business, not like a disaster. It's a dip city disaster in progress. Thank you.
Mr. Vint, as long as you're there, do you want to provide testimony on item number 38, which is the acceptance and dedication of a deed and easements for public use? This, next item is 38. I know you want to provide testimony on that. As long as you're there, you might as well give testimony on 38 as well, please.
Yeah, my latest glasses are in a repair shop, getting new lenses in them, so I'm trying to see through these old ones. But anyway, United Autumn of Scottsdale Property Holdings easement is for sidewalk purposes. Easements are for a lot of things. And easements up in my neighborhood, again, have been destroyed. The Streets Department has no idea what they're doing. Wiley Bear quit, retired, spiked his pension and left because he was a disaster in progress also. This is awful. It's not that I'm the only one that wants to complain here, but the problem is, citizens, if they come down here, they get treated like dirt. And you make a purpose on bringing up certain items to the first, because you've probably got friends that want to leave early. That's not the way you run a business. You run a business like you run a business, for profit and not for wasteful. It's a disaster what you're doing. But again, I got to make that recommendation and have something followed up, want it to be an item in here, that the city is going to operate like a business. You got to let people know that in the first of this page, it says you want us to participate. You don't want anybody to participate unless we come down, kiss your fanny, tell you what wonderful people you are, but I'm not going to do that. Thank you.
All right, Pat, the item at hand, it has to do with an acceptance and dedication of a deed and easement for public use. Your testimony completed. Thank you for your testimony very much. All right, so if you want to add 38 to the item, that would think of like card 38. We have a motion, second, 37 and 38. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval, item 40. I think Councilman Gallego has comments.
We have a motion in favor of number 40, item 40. Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilman Gallego, do you have comments on item number 40?
Yes, item number 40 has to do with the airport compatible land reuse plan and getting a consultant. So this will start a process, well, continue a process to try to get some of the land we own back into use, which I think is very compatible with both our financial goals and our goals to be a good neighbor where we own property near people's homes. So I had a lot of time to review and this process and there's some particular items that I wanted to mention that were very important to District Eight residents who live near the sites that the city has acquired through our programs. One is that we will really be building on the past processes that the Planning Department has done on Reinvent Phoenix General Plan and others, because we've had a lot of dialogues in this area and it was important to me that we didn't reinvent the wheel on these processes and that we include the people who have been involved with those planning processes and also our neighborhood specialists so that we can really get good input and some creativity about these lots. It was also important to me, if we pursue the grant, that it would not include any additional restrictions from the FAA about land use, because as we all on the council have learned, FAA does not value local control. And so I really wanted to make sure that there weren't any additional restrictions from the FAA. I've also said that the history in this area and some of the rich institutions, so much civil rights history in this area, is an important process and that we need to have a historian involved in understanding this and that we need to look for as many bilingual professionals as possible, because we have a lot of people in this area who prefer to speak in Spanish and that not just translation, but people who are bilingual and involved in the planning process will lead to better outcomes and that we'll also be partnering with school district leaders and nonprofits in the area so that we can really have a land reuse plan that is compatible with the airport, our great economic engine, but also makes also makes sense for the neighborhood and the people who still live there. So we spent a lot of time on this. Thank you to the aviation staff for putting up with all my questions, but I really am committed to a good outcome, and will be very involved. The RFP does include, they have to meet with the council a lot, which I think was a good condition, because we do want to be very actively involved with that. So thank you to my colleagues for letting me make a few comments on this item.
Thank you for those comments, and your active involvement's going to make it a better, better result. Other comments, members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor.
Move approval items forty-seven to fifty-one.
Second.
A motion and second on forty-seven to fifty-one. Any cards on those items? Comments by council? Roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is item number fifty-two. We are now on the planning and zoning agenda. This is an item, I have to have a public hearing, then close the public hearing, is that accurate?
Chris.
Can we do a staff presentation first, before the public hearing, or should that be before the vote?
Mayor, you can, generally, you have the public hearing and then do the staff presentation, because the public hearing is a requirement under the state law.
Okay, so we could do public hearing, take the testimony from the public.
And then do the staff presentation.
Then do staff presentation, then there's a motion, then we take additional public testimony at that time as well?
No.
No.
You could just go ahead and have it at the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. We can ask members of the public, or those who testified during the public hearing, questions at that time?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize. I don't know if that's our typical process on zoning cases, but I apologize. Anyway, so we will, this item is item number fifty-two. This is a proposed rezoning of a parcel near Fifty-Third Street and Van Buren, which I believe is in District Six, Councilman DeCiccio's district. The first part is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing on item number fifty-two. The first speaker wishing to testify in favor of the posed item is Steve Earl, who I think is representing the applicant. Mr. Earl, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Stephen Earl at thirty-one oh one North Central Avenue. I'm here tonight in behalf of the property owner and the long-term lessee of this site. It is a leftover parcel from the construction of the two oh two freeway. Used to be larger, now it's about an acre of ground. It's Zone C three, which is obviously a very intense zoning category. I don't remember the last time the city ever zoned anything to C three. It allows very intense uses, but unfortunately, what it does not allow is welding operations and storage of equipment. To do that, you need A one. The proposed use of this property is for a small building, to house the clear channel operations for maintenance of their signs and their equipment. So that does take welding, and it does store equipment. The second reason for this request is there is an existing billboard. By the way, this board shows that all the surrounding property owners are in favor of the request. The village voted, I think, fifteen or sixteen to two in favor, as well as the Planning Commission unanimously. One of the aspects of the case that has created, I guess, some controversy was the, how you get in and out of the site. So we have on this little exhibit how the property will be utilized. There is a stipulation requiring only left-in and right-out. It does have access controls from ADOT on both its west side and south side, so the only way to access is Fifty-Third. But we have agreed to stipulations, so that the access does not go up into the neighborhood. Another aspect of this, which has been a challenge for some people, is that there is an existing billboard that's located on the Bella Flora condominium project, and it got there by right when it was Zone C three, but the Bella Flora condominiums were Zones R four before they were built, and so the board became non-conforming. It's been there a long time. And that group has asked that, asked Clear Channel to move the board away from their windows. We have a, an exhibit that shows just how challenging this is to have this near your windows. This is the board in question. It's at the southwest corner of their site. These are nighttime photographs, and you can see the reflection of the billboard in their windows. They've asked that this board be moved, and in fact, Clear Channel is willing to move it across to this property, if we go back to the site plan. Well, this is fine, move it from where it is in the red to the green. The second benefit of moving it to there is that it can be reoriented away from the neighborhood and toward the freeway. Now, that takes subsequent approvals from the city. This action alone will not grant that. There are additional items that need to be approved through the zoning adjustment divisions to do that, but we would like to pursue that. There have been some say, well, why don't you build, let's get the site plan up, why don't you build the building with the sign, or build the building first and the sign? And what we've told staff is, we're happy to upgrade the site with all the landscaping. We could even build the walls if necessary. We can grade the site, so that it's ready, but the capital requirements for the building are a little different than moving the sign. We think that independent of the building, it's a good thing to move the sign away from the neighborhood. And so we've agreed to require, and there's a stipulation requiring us to put in the landscaping that you're seeing on this site plan. We are stipulated, by the way, to this plan, so any change in this plan would have to come back through council, and we're stipulated to this elevation, which is shown here. So we believe it's a good use. We give it as appropriate. All recommending bodies have recommended its approval, and I'm glad to respond to any questions you might have.
All right. I'm not sure we can ask questions in light, with the way this is set up.
No, you can, Mayor, I stink right. You can go ahead and have a staff presentation as part of the public hearing. You can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Earl?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much for the, for your testimony. Mr. Stevenson, you, and I don't want to repeat anything that Mr. Earl just said in terms of the facts, but maybe we could get a short staff presentation on the proposal.
Certainly, Mayor, members of council. I have a PowerPoint too, but I'll forego that in the interest of time, because we just went through this. But I will say that this request, existing zoning is C three, it's to A one, to allow a storage warehouse and off-premise sign. It was approved by the Camelback East Village Planning Committee by a vote of fourteen to two, and the Planning Commission also approved it by a vote of seven to zero. The Planning Commission added a stipulation due to some neighborhood concerns about traffic, and so that stipulation appears before you today as part of their recommendation, and it would require the applicants to make a right-out and a left into that site, coming from Van Buren, so that it would not go, traffic would not go further to the north through the neighborhood. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stevenson?
Landscaping.
Councilman Noakowski, please.
Just some clarification. We heard landscaping was a part of that stipulation. Is that true or not?
Correct, Mayor. Councilman Noakowski, the staff stipulation does require that concurrent, or actually before the off-premise sign would be installed, they would have to install the landscaping for the site, and so that is something that's required. It was done prior to the Planning Commission, that's why I didn't mention it.
Any other questions, Mr. Stevenson? Councilman?
In reading this letter, it says, Alan, can you give me clarity about it not complying with the general plan?
So, Mayor, Councilman Pastor, I don't have a copy of the letter, but the...
The first sentence.
So, the general plan for it, I believe, is commercial, and the existing zoning is C three. Under the general plan, we measure conformity with the general plan at ten acres or greater, and so this site is only one acre, so it complies with the general plan policy allowing flexibility.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, Mr. Barnes, you wish to provide testimony on this item?
My name is Paul Barnes, reside fifty-five eighteen East Mariposa, and I'm here representing the Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix. But actually, I'm here because Barry Stucker, who was the appellant, had a death in the family, and he couldn't be here, so he asked me to come in his stead. We talked about the fact that it is not in accordance with the general plan, and I understand the ten-acre requirement, and that's very nice, but nonetheless, it's not in accordance with the general plan. And to say if you have under ten acres, it doesn't have to be, doesn't take away from the point, as far as I'm concerned, or other neighborhood people. Furthermore, some have suggested that the rezoning from C three to A one is a ruse to merely permit the removal of a digital billboard to the site. Now, I don't subscribe to that, because I have the utmost confidence in the integrity of Stephen Earl, who is representing the applicant. This having been said, I feel that under the circumstances, it would be appropriate that a stipulation be added to state that the permit for a billboard shall not be granted until the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a warehouse. Building substantially as depicted in the applicant's current site plan has been granted. To those who might say that, well, you don't have to worry about that, the site plan is stipulated, and it specifies a warehouse. I say that's not enough. And it's not enough, and I give this as an example, on the twenty-first of January, there was a planning hearing officer hearing involved with eleven items. Seven of those items had to do with changing the site plans on which prior surrounding zoning actions had been based. There's no predictability when you're doing with a neighborhood and you're trying to settle a rezoning case, and then it can be changed to the PHO process. I am a big boy, no, well, I guess, that's, that's not quite accurate. I am an old man. And frankly, I'm used to being disappointed in rezoning cases. Nonetheless, I feel that it would be unfortunate if this case proceeds the way it is now, because there are a lot of those people out there that are going to say the city artificially did a rezoning for a billboard. I don't necessarily subscribe to that, but others will, will say that, and I just think that's unfortunate for the city, and I hate to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnes, for your testimony. Ms. Moore, do you wish to write testimony on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Moore, and I live at forty-eight thirty-nine East Brule Street. I am vice president of the Linden Park Neighborhood Association and vice chair of the Reinvent Phoenix Gateway Steering Committee for the transit-oriented development along the light rail in our district. I am here today to express my concern that this zoning change from C three, commercial to A one industrial, on a property north of Van Buren Street, will set a precedent for development along the light rail line. I am pleased that the stipulation number six, restricting access to the left-in, right-in, right-out, was added. However, I continue to have concerns, which I share with Barry Stucker, about graffiti, so I would ask that the planned eight-foot block fence be modified, perhaps to a wrought iron fence, or something that would inhibit graffiti, and hopefully with plenty of lighting on the property. I would also ask for a stipulation for the zoning to revert back to C three if no off-premise sign is installed and the building is not built or started within a specified time period. Although there is very little likelihood of this scenario, it seems that this stipulation should be included as the A one zoning is not supported by the general plan and sets a precedent for A one industrial rezoning for properties north of Van Buren. I support the comments made by Paul Barnes. I would like to ask for the addition of a stipulation linking the proposed warehouse being constructed for the off-premise sign to go forward. And again, I ask that you not set a precedent of rezoning along the light rail to A one industrial, north of Van Buren Street, especially in the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Mr. Grace, Vic Grace, do you wish to write testimony on this item?
Okay, here we go. Thought I'd go for the tall one. Mayor Stanton, members of the council, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the time to speak on this. As I am, my name is Vic Grace. I live at fifty-three oh two East Van Buren, which happens to be in the Bella Flora condominiums across the street. I'm also a member of the HOA Board of Directors for Bella Flora, and a member of the Balt Elementary School District Governing Board. And with both hats I wear, I support this. The HOA would like to see the existing billboard moved because of where it is. It was grandfathered in. Rather than wait for the lease to end in sometime in the next decade, we would like to see the sign moved. So that is good for our property values. As a homeowner, I appreciate that. But most importantly, me, importantly to me, as a member of the school board, I don't like vacant lots. Vacant lots don't get a lot in property taxes, and don't get a lot of money coming into the schools. Any improvement made to that lot is going to help the schools. I have been waiting, since I've moved there ten years ago, and everybody else have been waiting since that piece was carved out of the two oh two for something to happen. This is the only plan I've seen for it, but it is a plan I support. I do not think it's going to harm the neighborhood. I believe the stipulations that have been made address all of the neighborhood concerns, and I strongly support this, and I hope you will support it too. Thank you very much for your time.
I have, I have a question.
Councilman Noakowski has a quick question. I think Vice Mayor may have to sneak out, but he's going to appear telephonically for the remainder of the case.
Yes, I'm voting on this. I'm sorry, are there any questions?
The question is that you actually had a chance to meet with the applicant to listen to your concerns and...
Yes, I have.
All right.
And I have, I have made suggestions to the applicant for stipulations. I was not able to attend the final, the Planning Committee meeting, but I do understand that those stipulations were incorporated at that time.
I just want to make sure that you had a chance to actually talk to the applicant and that can hear your concerns. Thank you.
Yes, I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There are no other cards on this item. Does anyone else here wish to provide testimony? Item number fifty-two, that is going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. I believe this item is in District Six, so Councilman DeCiccio, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move forward the Planning Commission recommendations. I do like the idea of the, is Mary still here? There you are. Mary, your idea on the wrought iron fence, I think, works well. I'm not sure if the applicant is totally on board on that, but I like the idea for the graffiti end of it. And we've got to remember that the main focus here is taking a sign that is in a very conspicuous area, a place that has an impact on neighbors, and putting it in a location where it has a lot less impact, if any, impact on neighbors. And so I'm fully supportive of this proposal here. I hope we can move it forward, so I make the motion, Planning Commission recommendation, and the wrought iron fence.
Second. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the motion is in favor of the Planning Commission with one change, and that would be a stipulation requiring wrought iron fence as opposed to the fence that was shown in the, Mr. Stevenson, do you have a question or thought on that?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, if I could clarify, I would say that the motion would be to approve it per the Planning Commission recommendation, adopt the related ordinance, adding stipulation number seven, that view fencing shall be utilized on the site as approved by the Planning and Development Department.
That's my motion.
Okay, so that's the motion from Councilman DeCiccio. I assume the second is okay with the, the proposal. I don't know, from the applicant's perspective, that they want to change your testimony in light of that proposed change to the, on the, on the motion to wrought iron fence? Okay, so, and so the applicant is okay with the wrought iron fence? I guess the question is from Planning Director. The language that was provided earlier meets the, the issue about the elevations already having been set, can we change it now?
Mayor, yes, it does, because stipulation number one says, general conformance of those exhibits as modified by the following stipps. Stipulation number seven is one of those following stipps, if that's what's approved by the mayor and council.
All right, Councilman Gallego.
Actually, I have an additional question for the applicant. Actually, I have an additional question for the applicant. My understa, and I don't know if you might wanna go to the microphone for, in case anyone was watching it at home, but my understanding is there are some people in the neighborhood who did prefer a solid fence, and so if it would be okay with both the applicant and community members, if we maybe could have a motion just saying graffiti abatement, and that if everyone preferred something like, um, landscaping in front of the fence, that that would also be an option that might be more consistent with...
I don't think we can do that. I think today we have to decide, uh, is it gonna be...
Just the motion could be graffiti abatement.
I, I'm okay with that. I, does that work for you, Mary?
Yes.
For the neighbors?
Oh.
Okay. If we could, sorry about that, Steve.
That's all right. I wanna make sure it's okay, uh...
I like the idea of, it's, I, I like the, the, the concept and the concern over graffiti matters, and if there's a way to deal with it in a different way, then...
Mm-hmm. We would give the applicant more options, and it might even be more consistent with the reinvent plan, which has a very ambitious goal right now to green up the neighborhood. And if it doesn't work out, I mean, it is not a huge sidewalk, if I remember correctly, then you can stick with wrought iron, but at least that way, we don't have to have another...
Okay, so, okay, so I wanna turn to Alan Stevenson now.
Could you make it for the other one?
Uh, can we, can we amend this in a way that the fence is a graffiti abatement-type fence, without specifying today what that, what that would mean? Can we do that?
Mayor, uh, members of council, yes, we can. Uh, I think what, what we would do, just to be clear on the record, is staff would explore those other graffiti measures as requested by Councilman Gallego and, and voted on by the council, but at the end of the day, if that couldn't be done, staff would have to make a decision to then go with the view fencing if, if it couldn't be done, because what we can have is a stipulation that says, as approved by the community, 'cause there's lots of different community voices. So, staff would have to decide, but we would certainly explore every opportunity to see what we could do with graffiti abatement first, and then go to view fencing, so long as the...
Councilman DeCiccio, are you okay with that?
Uh, well, I'm asking Councilman, are you okay with that, like, language?
That, that's perfect.
Okay. I totally am, yeah. I thought it was a good idea. Yeah.
And, uh, as legally required, the second is okay. Mr. Earl, did you have something to say on that issue?
The only thing I wanted to add, which I think helps the situation, is there is a stip obligating us to put in the landscaping first, before anything is done. And the landscaping goes in, then the wall goes behind that, whatever kind of wall it is. And it's set back thirty feet away from the street.
Okay. That's, that's a current stipulation. Yeah, okay. All right, so, Ms. Stevenson, is that enough for you?
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of council. Just to be clear, I would say we modify stipulation number seven to say that graffiti abatement measures shall be explored first, and then view fencing shall be utilized as approved by the Planning and Development Department.
Okay. And Ms. Moore, uh, you seem to be, uh, on the issue of the, of the graffiti side, you're okay with that? The key is that we have a, a wall there that, uh, you, you can have confidence will not have graffiti, or at least chance of graffiti? Got it. Good point. Well, that's, uh, so I don't know how you wanna deal with that, Stick with what we got?
Stick with what we got.
Okay, no problem. Okay, um, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments by members of this, uh, council? Okay, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Uh, yes, that item passes unanimously. We have no other, uh, business for this city council, no other cards for cities' requests. Oh, there are more cards for the requests, I apologize. So the formal meeting is now adjourned. We're gonna move on.